To order, Viviana, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore, Glenn Johnson, Cynthia Meyer, here. Matt Lassen, Cheryl Lee, Greg Sherry, Pablo Serna, Kerry Kahler. And Ishmael said he would be in attendance as well. Oh, no, I'm sorry, he won't be in attendance, he'll be absent.
But maybe he changed his mind. Okay, item number two is citizen comments. Do we have any requests for citizen comments that you know of, Madam Secretary?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, if anybody comes in, let me know. We'll move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the December 17, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Y'all had an opportunity to read them? If so, were there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Make a motion that we approve as is?
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? With the record for reflect, it passes unanimously. Item 3B, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1C, Section 5 preliminary plat being 16.9 through 0 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number five, located west of FM 969, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Bilt?
So we've got five plats on your agenda tonight. This first one is a preliminary plat that's in Section 1C of the Colony MUD. So you'll see on the screen, 1C5, it's starting to be now in the middle of the colony development. They're working their way across fairly quickly with new lots and new sections of the subdivision. So this is preliminary plat, it meets all our future land use, it's meeting all of the requirements of their, the Colony MUD Third Amendment agreement for the consent agreement that went along with Municipal Utility District. This is the plat, you can see it's got three main roads in it, it's got a loop road and one that bisects in the middle. 16.93 acres, it's gonna be 87 residential lots, these are their smaller product type of 40 to 45 feet wide lots. They have five total streets that are all residential in this section. They also have two drainage, landscape, public utility, open space lots in this section. So the DRC met on December 3 to review and found this administratively complete and recommended, and then the city engineer also reviewed the preliminary drainage plan and preliminary infrastructure, and all of these met the B-3 code and their consent agreement requirements, and the planning director recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Johnson?
I'm just curious, we, all the subdivisions we've got considered tonight are on the same road, and it's been approved, I assume. And I assume it was approved for the estimated number of vehicles that all the subdivisions together would pour onto that road?
Yes, so they, so this entire subdivision is intended to have 4,300 unit, living unit equivalents, it'll be less than units than that, that's their, what their wastewater limitations are. And the map doesn't quite show, there'll be two main roads in and out of this, the both X969, the current constructed one is Sam Houston that connects there. There will be a traffic light at that intersection that the developer will be participating in, that is driven by the trips that they're generating from this development. As they build out, there'll also be a connection on 969, the north end, on a to-be-named road that they have. They're actually planning to come in very soon, starting on the other arm, so the other part that's connected to 969, and eventually meet in the middle. They do have connections to the existing section of the colony and the original section that's not within the Municipal Utility District. Part of that is gated, but there are, there are road connections through there as well. Did that answer the question?
Thank you, I assumed that was, I'd just like your explanation.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a, make a motion to approve the action for the Colony MUD 1C, Section 5 preliminary mat.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Kerry Kahler. Kerry's unanimously.
Kerry's unanimously, thank you very much. Next item is item 3C, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1B, Section 1, final plat, being 22.419 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number 5, located west of FM 969, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
So this, the next three are all in this, or I think four are all in this same area. They do have some connections, that they have to make two external properties at certain points in the subdivision that are, we're actually taking a agreement to council that basically allows them to delay construction of those till they connect, or until they meet a certain number of units in the whole development. But, so when the property to the south and the north develops, those roads will connect out, and there'll be additional ways in and out of each section. So between 1B and 1, 1B1 and 1B3, there should, there will be a connection. So this is 1B1, the connection, a future connection will be to the west, to the left-hand side of this. It's a little over 22 acres, it's the 55 units of their 45 to 50 foot wide product. And there'll be five residential streets that all connect back to Sam Houston, and there'll be five assorted lots for drainage and open space. The DRC met on this, just met in January on this plat, and found it to be administratively complete and met all of the previous approvals that were necessary to get to the final plat stage. So they've had a preliminary plat, final drainage plat, plan, public improvement plans approved, and again, they're almost through with construction of all the infrastructure for this section. And the planning director does recommend approval. Any questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Could you, the drainage from this portion of the entire development is to the southeast, and I note on the location map that there appears to be somewhat of a pond and a drainage. Is it gonna be through that drainage area after, when they leave the, when the drainage from the detention ponds?
Yeah, so they have, they have a drainage pond, I believe to the north of this, that actually drains to the, to the north section, and they have a regional detention pond that's already constructed that it's draining to. And I believe the representative from the engineers here, if they, no?
I would, but I'm, I'm clearly not, I'm clearly not, I'm not, I'm not, the engineer of the city.
Okay.
Clarified that in a hurry, didn't you?
But yes, they did do, so they did do a public improvement plan that was for them, all the major drainage, so that, that all, so as they built up the section, the drainage was already there to handle each section.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'm reading through the drainage, and you say the drainage plan is updated, is using the updated rainfall totals of Atlas 14, is that the most recent one?
Yes, Atlas 14 is the most recent numbers that came out, I think, 16, 18 months ago. And that, it increased the rainfall intensity, so it is higher detention levels that are required.
Any other questions? Or Pablo, did that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So they did in earlier phases have to put in D cell lanes on this section, but there are no plans at present. I believe, the last I looked, the Campo Plan has this in the 2045 schedule for widening this section to four lanes.
And right now, we're just considering the mud. That'll be dealt, roads will be dealt with at a later time. Any other questions? I see these others, others are quite similar, can we read and?
Yeah, so you can take, vote on this one, and then pretty much each section is the same.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item 3C.
I move to approve the final plat for Colony MUD 1B, Section 1.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Serna's seconded, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Kerry Kahler?
Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1B, Section 2, final plat, being 16.076 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number 5, located west of FM 969, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Bilt?
So this is, Section 1B2 is to the north of Sam Houston, in that, the top red square. It's the similar information, that's the plat, it all connects back to Sam Houston. On this plat, there will be, it's further to the east, a connection that goes to the north, that will go out of this eventually. These 16 acres, these are 71 lots that are 50 foot wide, and with three open space lots. And they have gone through all the processes that, we looked through to make sure it's administratively complete, and the planning director does recommend approval.
Are there any questions? No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the final plat.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Please call the roll. She's typing as fast as she can.
Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Kerry Kahler?
Our motion passes unanimously. Item 3E, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1B, Section 3, final plat, being 17.762 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number 5, located west of FM 969, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
So this is, past, we passed there, the third section there to the far west, south side of Sam Houston. You can see, here's the plat, it will connect over to Section, I believe, 1B5, to the west in the future. And you can see on this one, to the east, that's the connector road that'll be built either when this track below it develops, which is one that is talking about developing potentially soon, or they have to build it when they hit, I think around 3,000 units of their full build-out. These are 47 lots, and they're, these are their larger product type at 60 to 65 feet wide. Any questions about this section?
Any questions? Mr. Johnson?
You answered the question, I mean, it's, notice the right-of-way reserve, every other subdivision we're considering tonight has two exits to Sam Houston, this one will not have one, as approved by the final plat. But there's, you're saying that there, there, the road that's shown on the plat is just one road onto Sam Houston?
Yes, this section, so, so the road in the middle will have, connects to Sam Houston into the section, but then it'll connect to Section 15, which does connect back to Sam Houston as well. So the colony does, they divide up their sections in kind of small chunks, so they can sell them to builders, it's, it's part of their marketing, because they're, as you saw, they're all different sized lots, they can sell different, different lot types to different developers on different schedules, which is why they're in various small plats. So it will, it, this is, so, that, I can't read the name of the street, and I've forgotten it, that's, that street, that first cul-de-sac, as it goes west, will connect to another street that connects to Sam Houston. You see that little dashed line that's going out, that, that, that'll follow the center line of the future road, will connect back to Sam Houston as well.
That's listed as a drainage easement?
It, right now, for, because the next section, when it plats, it will have the storm drain in it.
Okay, I guess I'm, I need to have a understanding of what the final plat is, this will be changed, but we're approving, what is now a right-of-way will become a road, and what is listed as a drainage easement will become a road. And I'm just wondering.
So we're only approving the stuff that's in the dark, the dark line, so the, so the dashed line to this, off to the west, is just showing an off-site easement that the, that for now, the subdivision is taking access to while it's under construction before the next section gets final platted. So when the next section gets platted, there'll be a roadway that goes over that, that easement, which the drainage easement and the right-of-way function similarly, does that make sense? And then the right-of-way reservation, what this is enabling us to do with the roadway agreement that is gonna be, we're taking it to city council for approval at the next meeting, it'll allow them to delay the construction of that road until the road to the south, until there's something to connect to. And then at that point, the county will be the one who takes over that road, so they'll dedicate the right-of-way at that point. So it's reserved so that no one builds anything there, and we know there's gonna be a road there, but the actual dedication of that will happen when they build the road, and then turn it over to the county to maintain.
But if none of that happens, this subdivision will have one exit out of the subdivision?
Yes, and that's, and that's been, that's been, what's been approved in their agreement, so.
Approved by whom?
City Council and their consent agreement.
Oh.
So as part of the Third amended Colony Consent Agreement, there was a roadway connection kind of plan that was approved with that, that showed this, this connection to the south, and then allowed the rest of the connections to stay internal. Before, before we got this, this connection, the, the plan had been to provide no connections out, other than that Sam Houston, so.
Right, okay. Having lived in two subdivisions with only one exit, I'm a little, but once we approve it, then whatever's shown on here is approved, and we're hoping that there'll be further development or applications that we will consider that will fill in the gaps that we hope will be filled.
Yes, basically, if the developer gets to a certain point and they don't provide that road, this developer or the next one that owns the development, if they get to that point and they don't build this road, we don't let them continue, so.
We don't let them what?
We don't let them continue, there's, there's a number trigger, that they, after they get to a certain point, they have to build these, these roads that go out, or they build it at, when someone starts to build the one to the south, whichever comes first.
And, and right now, the agreement is, until 3,000 people live in the subdivision, they're all, they're fine.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, a lot of this has been developed, this has been going on, I think, for 15 years, somewhere around there, you know, long, since it started, so a lot of the codes were different, our connectivity requirements were different, that's part of why we adopted the codes we adopted.
I understand, I just.
Good point, Glenn, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Serna, are you turning on your?
Yes, well, just to pick up on something you just said, this has been going on for some time, and, you know, I think I recall another plat that came before us, much newer, that we, looking at this, this is, I guess this layout has been on the boards for a while, this is not a new, this is just a formal process, is that correct?
Yes, this is a formal process to get down to that point where they have buildable lots, and that they are, they're following our previous subdivision code and the consent agreement that's been approved by council.
In, in moving forward, are we gonna get a, a big picture, I guess, like, do they do, whenever someone, a developer comes in, are they gonna provide the overall, fully developed picture of what it would look like, and then come back and phase it?
Yes, so with our new, if, if they started today under our new code, they would have, anything over 3.4 acres is required to do a neighborhood regulating plan that shows us the layout and how it interacts with everything around it, so we would be doing that planning a lot earlier on.
Is that regulating plan something that we would look at?
If it follows the code, no, if they, if it's not following the code, it would come to you all.
Okay.
Any other questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Colony MUD 1B, Section 3.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Glenn Johnson?
Abstained.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Kerry Kahler?
Motion passes with two extensions. Item 3F, consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1A West amenity site final plan, being 5.199 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bangs survey, abstract number 5, located west of FM 969, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
So this is the, the last section, and it's the smallest section then right up front, this is the first Sam Houston as you're going, driving west into the development. So this is a one lot, or, yeah, one lot subdivision with one road platted, this was to get them to construction of the amenity center for, they call it, it technically was in the 1B preliminary plat, but they called it 1A for financing reasons, I believe, because it's serving the 1A section. We don't have naming conventions in our code for plats, so we can't make them name the plats what we want, so it got a little confusing, but that's why it's called the 1A, it really was in the 1B preliminary plat. But it's one lot, it's a little over five acres, it continued the road, and it's one big lot for their amenities center. The DRC met January 22nd and reviewed the plat, found it administratively complete in compliance with our subdivision regulations and their consent agreement, and it has been approved and been following all of their final drainage plans and public improvement plan. Any questions?
Mr. Johnson?
It's designated as an amenity site, is there any development requirement, or, I mean, if they just decided to not build an amenity center, it would just be a vacant lot?
Yes. Well, the developer, do you wanna come over here and talk so you can make them hear you?
Could you give us your, your name on the, on the record now, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
In your environment?
My name is Joey Nahida, I'm with Hunt. To answering your question, it's already under construction, and it'll, it'll be open, it's Purry Vista's name of the amenity center, and we're scheduled to be open in the next 60 days. So it's, we're, we're about 50% done.
Thank you. What, what's on it? Just out of curiosity.
So we have a swimming pool, we also, the inside, we're gonna have a little gym, and then there's a big awning area for people to, you know, sit down and relax, some bathrooms. You know, it's, it's not a huge area, that wasn't the design and plan for the colony because it's such a weird shape, you know, it's kinda like a fallen-down V. So it's, it's to support the neighboring sections, and then throughout, I guess, big picture of the colony is that weird shape, we have, we're gonna be sprinkling amenity centers throughout the colony to serve the whole colony, just because it's, it's not your traditional square rectangular shape, and we didn't want people to have to drive from that upper northern arm all the way down to the southern arm. So, I don't, well, can't see on, there's no map, but, we already have an amenity center that we opened up to the east of 969, right there, right near the Colorado River, and the site where we have it going back to the west, that's the next one, and then here in the next couple of weeks, we're, or couple of months, we have another proposed amenity center to the west of this one, to the west of 1B2, it's gonna be on the north side of Sam Houston. And then we have another plan for another amenity center in, in MUD 1C, and that's gonna be a pretty big one, similar to, if you're familiar with the, the original colonies, it's within the gates, that's a big amenity center, and we're doing something similar to that one, so, that's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, I apologize.
Thank you for the information, and I hope we will soon all be able to use amenity centers.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And, I mean, we have a, I can call it an honor, but we have a network of pros.
You don't have to, that's okay.
But any other questions before I?
Any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Here, seeing none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Colony MUD 1A West amenity site final plat.
Second. There's been a motion in second, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Kerry Kahler?
Motion approved unanimously. Item 4, updates for A, reminder on the timeline for review of the 2036 comprehensive plan.
So just a reminder to y'all to start reading your comprehensive plan if you haven't already, and for the next meeting, we're gonna go over the executive summary and the introductory chapter, and the second chapter on growth. So we're gonna, if we see how much of that we can get through at the next meeting, but those are the sections that kind of lay out how the comprehensive plan works and lays out, you know, what we're planning for in the growth section, so. And again, our goal is, is to read those sections and come up with what we know we need to update, and then the update will happen next year, so.
Could you, the executive summary, and what, what were the other sections?
Chapters 1 and 2.
1 and 2, okay.
We're going in order for now, and then we might, we may jump around after that, so.
So I have a question, so you say our goal is to update, so, 'cause I've started reading, started reading it, and are we, are we providing feedback on what has happened, what hasn't happened, what's been successful, what we feel needs to be improved? So I've kind of, as I was reading it, in my brain, starting like the SWOT analysis, 'cause I could sometimes do that, but then I thought, I don't know if that's really what they're wanting us to do. So what is it that you're wanting us to bring back to the table?
So what, what our end goal is, is that over the next several months, we're gonna look over this code and come up with, especially looking at the goals and objectives, to see if those are still in line with where we are today. It's been five years since we've, almost five years since we've adopted the comprehensive plan, and any of those goals and objectives that we, yeah, we've either completed, may not be our focus anymore, or need, need some more analysis, that, we're gonna build that list, some of them may be still on the list, still definitely things we need to do, and need to just stay in there, but the things that we need to change, we'll build that list, and then we'll use that to do the update next year. So that, so when we need to go pull data or rewrite sections, you know, of the code, but those will be what we're focusing on.
Do you, would you prefer that we send any suggestions to you for like, updates, so like, the sidewalks, there's a lot of, lot of what I read that are pending or in play right now, being done, right? There was something about an aquatic center, I haven't seen an aquatic center, or talk of an aquatic center. So would you prefer, but I would like some updates on like, some of the progress of the sidewalks and the street repairs, like, we, we see street repairs all downtown Maine, but what about the inner neighborhoods and the city? So would you prefer that we send you that, so maybe you can prepare?
Yeah.
For answers, okay.
Yeah, you can send those to me, and then, yeah, at the meeting, we'll talk about, and that's, we'll start to build. and that's, we'll start to build that list of what areas we need to focus on and what we need to update.
Okay.
So, and like the aquatic center, so I will say, we're five years into a plan that goes until 2036, so we're not, so we got, we got a few more years, so that aquatic center may not be in year five, it may be in year 15, so...
The goal of the comp plan to begin with was to take the temperature of the, of the neighborhoods, and of, all the neighborhoods, and of the people that live here, and to find out what is importing, important to them. And some things that might have been important a few years ago may not be so important anymore. We may have gone in a different direction, but it's to look at the comp plan, make sure it's still a living, breathing document that's relative and relevant to our community. And we may have some goals that we come up with that were on the radar back then. So it's, it's an opportunity to make this not a big old plan that gets set up, sat up on, on a shelf and gets dusty.
And that's kind of what I got while I was reading it, that's kind of how I felt, that they're right, you know, that things may have changed, and we have more people coming in, and now we have Tesla and that HEB, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
I do feel like, but I didn't want to like, make suggestions, because I didn't know what our, what our role exactly was, but I do feel like there are, in just reading what was laid out here, there are different generational levels of people in Bastrop. So will we be reaching out, or do you know if we will be getting input from the community again for this, or is this just...
That'll be part, I think, of what will determine based off of what needs to be updated, and what level of inter, of public outreach we need to do when we update.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you. Update on recent City Council actions regarding the Planning Department items.
Oh, so, like I said, we do have an agreement with the Colony going to the February 9th meeting for the roadway connections. Part of, part of the other reason why that's important is, is for fire reasons, we don't necessarily want a road that deadens to nowhere, that causes issues when people drive down or just like to go drive around on them, so it's actually beneficial that they delay construction until they are needed, so that'll be going on February 9th. Otherwise, I would like to take this time to introduce, sitting in the back, we have Shirley Ellis, and she is our new interim building official. Oh, nope, she's not the interim anymore, we dropped the interim, she is our new building official, so...
Welcome, welcome.
So she's, she's, yeah, she's been on an interim basis the last couple of weeks, and will be coming on full-time, so we're really glad to have her on board.
You'll be busy.
Yes, so, otherwise, any...
Foresee individual requests from anybody on the Planning Commission, if what you'd like to see on the agenda for future meetings. Mr. Cernas, reaching for his mic.
Like a suggestion, just on the, just an update on how the, how the applications are going, and are we getting more or less, and are we sufficiently staffed? I mean, I don't know if we make those decisions, but I think what we, we hope to do with the, everything we've done is to try to make it more streamlined, even though we've kind of raised the bar a little bit, so I don't know, if there's something to report on how that's, how that's going.
Yeah, we can definitely, yeah, we can get you information on that.
Good idea. Anything else?
I, I would like, maybe just a brief report occasionally as to what y'all are doing. I mean, we see it through the process, but, I mean, is it, are y'all swamped, is, how many permits are you turning through each month? Just a, a brief summary of, of the different things that the planning department considers to see how it's, how it's going, and we, Cheryl talked about, you know, there's some development that's happening near us that could be very significant, I just would like to have a, maybe an insider's view as to what, what is actually happening.
Yeah, and some of, some of what we have is a lot of, a lot of conversations right now, because, yeah, the development pressure is coming, some people aren't ready to pull the trigger, so right now, we're still in that, like, lots of conversation stage with people, at that point, nothing's a real project until it's a real project, so, but definitely we'll get you some information on what, kind of what's going on, so...
Any other input? If not, we'll move on to item 5.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Any, anybody wants to stay here? We're going out, we're gonna go eat, I hope, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion, we, uh, meeting's adjourned, thank you all.